This meeting of the Evendale Council to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance for the flag.
(Inaudible)
Secretary of State will call the roll.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Mr. Sextrow?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Albrecht?
Here.
Okay, Lieutenant McDaniel, come forward.
Appreciate you for your years of service in the Evendale Police Department. Deputy Captain McDaniel was hired on July 11, 1988. He served in the Evendale Police for 31 years and retired on March 14, 2021. Marais Deputy Captain McDaniel served in both the Evendale and the Village in Compton, Texas, Sergeant, and Lieutenant. In his career, he was officially a Superintendent in the Evendale Police Department. He served as Federation Manager and Federation Secretary supporting the Department of Defense throughout the United States. In his career, he was selected to be an officer of the Year by the Superintendent three times. In his career, he received 15 letters of commendation, including one as the Director of the FDI, and 62 letters of appreciation from his supervisor here in public at large in his career. In his career, he shared his time with his wife and death and his sons, Justin, Kyle, Jack, and Hudson. In his career, it is appropriate that this man recognize the then Deputy Captain's commitment to the values of crime and devotion while employed by the Evendale Police Department in the service of the government. Nowhere before, I, the Deputy Captain of the Evendale Police Department, and the Village Council, travel for you, bless you, appreciate you, and go to office and see the Senate. Appreciation and best wishes to you and my wife's retirement. That's me, and we're going to retire in May and fall to see you at the office of your death on November 20th, 2017.
33 years, seven eyes, still have special awareness of account of senses. In a lot of ways, I remember what he does today. Set in the mind, it's like this. I remember the time when I acted myself doing about 40 or something, kind of down mine, and kind of coming up with how I really wanted to do my work, so that part of it I would do. Thanks to Mayor and Council, and the things, always those things, and things, but thanks Chief Ford. And Chief Ford, the chairman of the channel department collectively, and the business was providing certain amount of resources and resources he, uh... Thank you, my wife, Pat. My little son, the two of them, probably last two, but you don't see that company all the time. How you graduated from here to graduate to now, Jack? Thanks for talking to us, though. Thanks to the partners and all of the administrative staff and the partners for all of this conversation. The role that you still here have never been one of these, and that's appreciated by some in the on that. Never forget that you do make difference in what you do. And if you guys feel we like you, we appreciate you, thank you all.
Today we honor in recognition of Lieutenant Joseph R. Ed Rock. The act above the call to... Marais Joseph R. Ed Rock, Lieutenant of the Evendale Police Department, while often relying on his years of experience, was instrumental in the robust and unquestionably broken act of saving the life of Mary police. And on January 1st, 2011, Lieutenant Ed Rock sets the sentence, there was a serious problem with Mrs. police's, or Mrs. police's failed to show at a gathering. Contacted the Evendale Police Department and Hennessy County Communication Center to initiate a search. In Marais, along the way, she went, searched the area for her and seen emergency vehicles. Responded to the scene with the vehicle, where a vehicle had crashed and struck at the base of a tree. Vehicle was off the road in an patch of woods and visible due to the fire that Crayor shared created. In Marais returned, the lieutenant took immediate action to get her out of the car where the rear end finding the engine running against the other floor and smoke and flames rising through the vehicle. In Marais, he recognized that the attempt to leave any other officers on the scene would mainly do the extra extract. Her from the burning vehicle was unsuccessful. Instructed the officer Ripfley of the medical police department to shoot out the back window, giving him means for entering into the vehicle. In Marais, he then ignored the rising flames and thickening snow, entered the rear passenger, passenger compartment of the car, and released her to her seat door, which allowed the assistant on the seat to call her, whom the speech who was suffering from a medical emergency and unable to act from the vehicle literally second before it was fully engulfed with film and flame. Nowhere before, I appreciate the time and bravery of the Evendale Police Department and the Hampton Village Council, fellow employees and residents of justice, who offer sincere appreciation and recognize, recognition to Joseph R. Ed Rock on his selfless lifesaving act. Testimony, your honor, your right, I surrender to the State Attorney and Justice of the Office of Defense on the 11th of May of this year. (Applause)
Yeah, I thought I saw all this crying stuff, but I'm not. You know, the work that we're doing, we can see deal with every... One of the things I said is, this wasn't a show where these guys knew they're just super singers, being shot. He didn't know what he was doing, but I know that he made a quick run on the spot, too. He did his best, but he just... So, you know, so there's a river out, there's a river, and he was certainly so there, and I picked him up, and he was just holding up, like he's gonna do that, and I'm like, oh, so, and that, it just, the, the fact that they knew something was wrong, where they had that feeling, and that's what these guys do, I think, though. And at the once, and then once, it was realized, and it was just going to be done, everybody hovering, I think, viewers and the officers too, because there's plenty of changes, they're in that position, really. And that, as what I know, and when I know that that was happening, and the story got out, and it's actually an accident move, yeah, folks want me to back, you know, I'm really out of the pot, I'm not even... And they're probably... But it's smart for these guys, this is stuff they do every day, and they just start their act, you know, when you're beginning to see the evidence, and I'm still here today to cover that. And I'm here to support for that, and you're welcome. Thank you.
We've got some people from the... I think it's something like that, so please step forward.
Here's a town hall on the South Sea with the Blue Ash Protective Association. The Blue Ash Protective Association evolved from the Blue Ash National Ice Park. It started in 1955, it evolved in 1993. It covers the city of Blue Ash, of Gomis, St. Mor Township, St. Township, Woodmont, Landville, and Evendale, at Evendale. We provided EMS, automatic fire departments, but they didn't have a squad, so we were five squad at time, that was the issue. A member of the department in the early days, named Jared White, this is his son here, he was killed by an accident, an accident, and they named him Ward after him, that may lead to that. And thankfully, it just says, someone who goes, volunteer on to help someone else. So, when he did a nomination for some of his son, Jared White, he's not a rational, and that's what, what he did, and, uh, I'll let, you don't have to take it from here.
That's right, Tom. But I remember that was young, so, just a couple of words. We'll make it quick, man. I know Joe Horst, and I knew the gentleman, and I believe it was from Moore High School in the start, uh, law, and I was in that 36th time, not 60. They're all, uh, they're, 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 they're like, they, they spent, uh, you know, they're almost crying, I first got, and I don't even know. Uh, so, anyway, I'll make this clear. So, this, this area, Hall and Memorial, the brothers, the Joe Ed Rock, was frozen in long, unfortunately, we fixed that. But the Blue Ash Protective Association, these equipment, drivers, and all the stuff that stayed alive and were in life.
I will say this, to end it, I'm retired, I'm a former tenant, uh, with the fire department there, and, uh, if you haven't seen it, you need to Google, Fire Run, Second One Township. You'll see the body, pink camera, footage of that. And what these guys did, when I entered that car, I know how tough it was to leave, and leave with all my protective gear on, with the heat from the smoking act. And when I saw that footage, I was very, very, so, you guys hit break a lot, thank you. Given the short, long, many, many things, what we've done, and anything, I think, might there be, uh, first apartment, and it's, uh, quite incredible, it's, uh, a, a lot of my idols, really, to do something that, uh, since they're in the ground, I'm like here, I love here. You know, it's been very, very years, this apartment, and to do something, for this guy, you know, it's been humbling. Uh, and I thank Chief Ford, the guardian of this apartment, for all of this. And on the hand of this, since I was able to watch Keith go along, we, 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 I've, we've seen a lot of serious problems, and, uh, those few people like that, for, about Nick Leonard, more, we, we, um, talk to Ford, this, that, the force, more, this. And very, very near this year, he, he ran from that inflection, and he ran off, and he was still a little too, he's a noob, uh, circle of homies, that's what happens in there, circle, and all of the great, great people, and, and...
The reasons why we have surgery, and, 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 that, that, you have to say, uh, we, 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 yeah, how much people will be watching, you know, that he's he like?
No one's kidding, she hasn't heard that laugh.
Would Lieutenant Newhauser please step forward? Come forward. I'm up here. Up to the front. Ordinance 21 dash 24, and I ask permission to read it by title only.
Go move. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance appointing Steve Newhauser as Assistant Chief of the Evendale Police Department and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading?
Go move. Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
Go move. Second.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Put, Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
Go move.
Second.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21 dash 24 adopted as an emergency. I think we got it. Well, counsel?
Thank you.
May I have a question, please? Hold up your right hand, please. I, Steve Newhauser?
I, Steve Newhauser.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And I will, in all respect, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And that I will, in all respect, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Chief of Police to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Chief of Police to the best of my ability.
Well, thank you, counsel, and I appreciate you for all the support. Chief Cordy, all I can say is, I am absolutely floored. I, nobody ever let this out of the bag, I had no idea. My family's here, my family here in Evendale's here. It's, it was a five minute, five minutes, I'm, I'm just absolutely shocked. I, I'm kind of speechless right now, but, of all the people that I love, and it's my family at home, and my family here in Evendale, um, you know, I can't think of a better spot to be in right now than to have, you know, the people that I love, and the people that have supported me over the years to be here with me. So, at that, I'll, I say thank you to everybody, counsel, the people here in Village, Chief Cordy, and I will do the best I can the next 12 months with this title. Thank you. Mayor and counsel, thank you for allowing me to take this time. I appreciate it. Mary brought a lot of cake out there, I'll try to keep them down, but...
It's our pleasure to hand you, ma'am. Okay, the minutes have been previously distributed of the previous council meeting, are there any objections, changes, or, or, to be offered? Bob, can I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
Can you tell me who made that motion?
Yeah, these two.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
We will go to the reports of committees now, and first is the Finance Committee. Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah, mayor, uh, everyone's interested in finances. The April revenues, uh, year-to-date, we are down $570,000 compared to last year, keeping in mind that they moved the tax filing deadline to this month, so we'll get a better gauge on, on gross receipts for 2020 after this month, it is all booked, and you really know where we are. Overall, general fund is positive, we're up, revenue over expense is 61,000, we're just kind of hovering, you know, about breakeven, we're just holding our breath and see how long we can go, but we're, we're at least, you know, after last year and everything we went through, breakeven isn't so bad, I was expecting it could have been a lot worse. Rec Center, the, uh, for those who aren't aware, the Fitness Center is now open without the required reservations, but for the...
We're going to have the second reading on the ordinance for fees.
Mayor, may I add something that's not covered by either committee? Mrs. McDaniel and I have been working with the Griffin Nature Preserve Group, and we have planned a volunteer day for May 22nd from 10:00 to 2:00. So if anybody's interested in coming up and helping us out up there, we'd love to have you. We're going to go up and we're trying to remove invasives. Honeysuckle mainly this time, I think. But we want some work to clean up the Griffin Farm. So if anybody's interested, please come on Saturday the 22nd.
Go up in the parking lot, bring some gloves, some insect repellent, and...
Decater repellent?
No, I don't think they'll be out yet. It's too early for that.
They're coming this week.
That's the 80 degrees.
Any other comments?
I have a question about, I just want some clarification on the Evendale numbers. Like, are those Evendale residents? Or are those people that attended the clinic at Evendale?
For vaccination purposes?
Yes, yes.
Those are Evendale residents.
Okay, okay.
And a clarification on both of the mobile sites. They will be Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccinations. So it's one shot only.
Any other comments?
On the Silco grand opening, are we going together as a group or just? I know it's from three to six, I don't know how that would work.
Well, I think the actual program is going to be about 4:00 if I'm not correct. And that's going to be a ribbon cutting and some other ceremonies at 4:00. So that would probably be an appropriate time to go if you want to come down. But they're going to have food and all that kind of stuff. But I'd say 4:00 would be appropriate. You should tell David if you're going because they do want to try to get a head count and put in all their food and stuff like that to prepare.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a few items on my agenda. First of all, the CIC voted this morning on the potential sale of land formerly known as the Rynx property. And by unanimous vote, they voted not to sell the land to the CCA. The reasons were varied. One of them was because of the potential objections of Princeton School District, others because of the lot size. But there are numerous items about that. I think you, did they all have one of these, David? They all have the surveys back. It was 354 people. And Mr. Elmer was kind enough to work on these and get them all together. And it took quite a bit of time because surveys, you ask six questions, but they come in all sizes. So he got them all together. By the survey of Evendale residents, it was clear that our residents did not want to see the CCA become, take part in the, take ownership of the property known as the Rynx property to the north. So if anybody else has any comments, you can make them now.
Mayor, are we, one of the things that you mentioned, and I think this was discussed, is that the council has never had a discussion for the last 20 years on what to do with that property. And I think the council is the one that would have to decide whether or not the property is sold. And I think that the council at some point ought to have a discussion about potential uses for that property so we don't have this kind of thing coming up again. I know that my preference at this time would be to incorporate that into our recreation center and not to sell it. But I think that's a discussion the council should have at some point.
We specifically... The CIC is now going to discuss what uses the property should have, one way or the other, whether it should just stay a green belt. We talked about that this morning. And we expect to make, if there is a recommendation, to make it to council again as to what they think should go on the property or not. And so over the next couple of months, we'll be doing that.
So the council is cut out of the...
The council would...
Cut out of the operation altogether?
It would be a recommendation that would come from CIC to the council and what they thought should be done with the property.
Okay, so the council won't discuss it.
Also during this last week, we've had a number of employees, employers in Evendale who've contacted us about how they can advertise to get new employees. Many of our businesses are suffering from lack of new employees. And so we are going to direct them to the Chamber of Commerce website. And we're talking to the chamber about establishing some kind of a website that would involve Evendale businesses and they could ask for, they would be able to notify Evendale people about their need for employees. It's, I think that it more rightly belongs, they wanted to advertise in the newsletter. And pretty soon we'd have a newsletter of classified ads. And that would be it because we have a lot of people who weren't able to get employees. The ICRC meeting took place this month. Just to tell you that they have a new used van to transport their equipment to events. They have remodeled the studio over in Charonville. And their revenues are holding steady right now as far as the remittances that they get from the cable companies. So it looks like we're pretty good for right now. During the week or during the month recently, we tried to make progress on the Cultural Arts Building Elevator. And we now have a bid from architects for $30,000 to redo the proposal that was existing before, which was $700,000 to $900,000. We're contacting the state of Ohio because we have a $150,000 grant from the state which should take place the 1st of July. It's a capital grant. And the director is working on that to find out how we can access that money. I think we have to go through the controlling board. But we have to figure out how we can access that money to use to pay for the $30,000. And then we can realistically go out to other grants' people to look for funds to be able to do the work on the particular elevator. That's our goal to try to do. The court decision, I think all of council knows about, on the Buckeye Institute versus the City of Columbus, that was, I call in our favor. The court found that the income tax as it was levied right now is constitutional. Whether working at home or where you're working, you pay the income tax where your business is. But this will certainly be appealed and will probably eventually go to the Supreme Court of the State of Ohio. And we should hear sometime in the foreseeable future what the situation is. At least we won the first round. October 24th, I think you all know, is town meeting. I will announce it to the people who are watching. It will be in person this year. It will be in the rec center. We will have a limit on attendance, perhaps. Perhaps by then it will be wide open. And then we will also make a decision in the coming months as to whether we will have a dinner or not as part of the town meeting. But we will also, we will all be able to present the state of this village in person and the situation. And that's the extent of the comments that I have tonight. Any others? All right, let's go to the ordinances then. We will go to ordinance 21-05, which is for a third reading. And I ask for permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the village of Evendale to change the IF-2 Industrial Flex 2 zoning to a PUD-ID, comma, Innovation District PUD zoning designation on parcel 611-0050-0066 and declaring it as an emergency. This is the third reading of this ordinance, and we're going to vote on it tonight. Any additional comments? All right, may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
No.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
I now declare ordinance 21-05 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 21-15 for a second reading tonight. And I ask for permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing Chapter 1442 of the Evendale Code of Ordinances in its entirety and adopting a new permit fee table. This will be the second reading, and next month it will be back for the third reading and a determination.
Mayor, can we make a motion, or I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to include the definitions that are in the page that was put on our desk?
I'll second. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
This is just a glossary attempt. That's right. What, it ought to be in the ordinance. It's not in the ordinance. The ordinance has an attachment.
Go ahead. Next is ordinance 21-25, and I ask for permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of amounts due upon certain contracts requiring certification of the availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. It's our traditional then and now. I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Now declare ordinance 21-25 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 21-26, and I ask for permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire seasonal employees for the Recreation Department and declaring it as an emergency. I'd like a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I'd like a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I'd like a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-26 adopted as an emergency. I will now turn ordinance 21-27 over to Mr. Aubrey.
I'm presenting this due to a, some of the fine grandchildren being part of this ordinance.
Then I need to recuse myself from this one, too.
And McDaniel.
Thank you.
I have permission, I'd like to present ordinance 21-27. I have a motion to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire seasonal employees for the Recreation Department and declaring it an emergency. I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. A motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. Now declare ordinance 21-27 adopted as an emergency.
Next, we have ordinance 21-28, and I'd like to have permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder to the Arrow Hub Boulevard Phase Two, excuse me, Phase Two Mass Grading Project and declaring it as an emergency. I'd like a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Next, I'd like a motion to, a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-28 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 21-29, and I'd like to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the Arrow Hub TIF fund for the fire branch water main installation as part of the Arrow Hub Phase Two roadway project and declaring it as an emergency. I'd like a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 21-29 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 21-30. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Mr. Plutoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section 258.120, sick leave subsection B, and declaring it as an emergency, and this will be the first reading of the ordinance. I have no more ordinances. Is there anything else to bring before the council? If not, may I, sir, you may step up.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Council members. My name is Brian Kennedy, and I'm actually here to speak on something you guys spoke about a little bit ago, and that's the CIC's decision not to recommend the sale of the land to Cincinnati Classical Academy. Just so I understand exactly where everything sits, actually a little bit to your question, Mr. Schaefer, with the CIC's recommendation, does the board still have the final voting decision to make whether or not to sell that property to Cincinnati Classical Academy?
What board, council, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry, council.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Then, then I, I know you guys have limited time, and I know prior to the meeting you mentioned this, so, but this is a very important thing. It's quite a bit different than a lot of the ordinances and things that have come before, so I just ask maybe six, seven minutes. I'll try to host soon. But I know I heard the CIC's decision or recommendation was unanimous, right? I ask you a question. Has the CIC ever been wrong? It probably has at some point. It's to you guys to make this decision. Make it on your own. Look at what is being said and don't miss the forest for the trees. What we are trying to do here is bring an education model that is working throughout this country in a great way for the students and the communities to where these schools reside. The, I fear that some of the decisions and the recommendations by the CIC is based on things that aren't true. I hear this all the time from my teacher friends who are talking to their friends. We are a volunteer, I am on the board. I have never gotten a penny. I will never, ever get a penny by being on the board. I have put thousands of my own dollars into this process in order to have a website, to have emails, to have flyers, to do all the things that we need to do in order to get to where we are today. We will never accept a penny. We will never be a part of a voucher system. And we aren't, we aren't asking to use Evendale's property. We're not asking to purchase this property so we can be close and use the tennis courts. We don't care about the tennis courts. We care about education. Also, this is not about Princeton. We are not attacking Princeton. The, the, the Ohio statutory requirements only allow us to build in certain areas. This is one of those areas. This is why we come to you, not because we have anything against Princeton. We do, however, think that education's probably going in the wrong direction. And I would be willing to bet, if you have kids and grandkids, you probably see this and appreciate it as well. I have a four-year-old, six-year-old, and a sophomore, 15-year-old. My 15-year-old cannot write cursive. He was never taught. Think, oh, no big deal, you can't write cursive. When he tried to sign his mother's, Mother's Day card, his name's Luke, it's four letters. He couldn't get it. His K was a B, a V, and an E because he's never learned to write cursive. Now, not being able to write cursive means you can't write cursive. Now, not being able to write cursive means you can't write cursive, it's not as pretty, you can't write fast, fine. But what writing cursive also does is when you are learning your letters, when you are connecting one letter to another through the process of writing cursive, it is an active learning process that helps you understand, I'm in a C and I'm going to an E and then to an A. It helps you learn what letters are coming next. That's why cursive is important. My kindergartner has four special days: gym, art, music, and media center. She doesn't have library. There is no library. There is no, and we're in Sycamore. There is no librarian. There's a media center, a media center teacher. My media center teacher today taught my daughter, they watched a video, they read a book, they played on tablets. Two out of the three things they did was on a computer. When my son, when I sat down with my son back in the day when I could keep up with his math, he's now in honors geometry, not real good at geometry, but I was able to help out with algebra sometimes. I said, okay, let's sit down. He needed help, he asked me for my help. I said, all right, let's get a pen and paper, let's sit down, let's work it out. He opened up a computer. He looked at me like I was crazy when I wanted to write this thing down. What did he do? There's a question on the computer, hit the question mark, gives you a little hint. Hit the question mark again, gives you a little hint. Hit the question mark again, gives you the answer. It is a passive movement, a passive learning process to do that. This is how our kids are being taught. This is why CCA is presenting you, you council members, this opportunity to bring this school here. The school is coming, whether it ends up being in Evendale and is a shining opportunity and beautiful school for Evendale, or whether we're someplace else. But these schools have a track record of success all over the country in reading scores and math scores in every way imaginable, in graduation rates, in lack of absences. Do you want to be the council members who said, you know what, I saw that the short term, maybe some folks didn't like the idea. A lot of them like it, though, too. Granted, I agree, it's not the majority yet, yet. But in five years, when those kids are doing exceptionally well, don't you want to be the people who say, I brought that here? Don't you want to be able to go to your constituents and say, yes, in the short term, some folks said, this sounds like a bad idea. It sounds kind of scary. It's a charter school. Charter schools have a bad reputation. We are a public school. We are free to every child in the state of Ohio, if they can get here. But, and in some in Kentucky, and some in Indiana, free. To build a brand-new, beautiful school will cost the taxpayers of Evendale zero, zero. We have a funding organization that is ready to build and fund this thing right now. All we need is the land. And then what happens? We get, the money that we get as a public school comes from the state of Ohio, not from village taxes, from anybody, directly from the state. Within that money, we will then pay off the amount that it costs to build this school, about $20 million we're going to put into this school, into your community. And through our, through the money that we get through the state of Ohio, we will pay that bond off over about 20, 30 years, depending upon how things go. And it will cost Evendale nothing. And you know what? Property values increase when these schools get built. And when parents come and watch their kids do a beautiful play, and they want to go out and have dinner afterwards, they usually go someplace close to the school. Your additional constituents who are opening businesses, who are talking about how their businesses have drained and have fallen away, wouldn't they love to know that there are 700 kids, maybe 80 of them just put on a presentation, and you've got mom and dad and grandma who would love to go out for some ice cream? Wouldn't it be great if they went for ice cream in Evendale? Yes, sir.
All of these arguments were made at the presentation by the charter school and the recreation center. Some, some people liked it, some people don't like it.
Sure.
But the site was just not an acceptable place. You could find another site that was acceptable. If you're in the Village of Evendale, it might be a different story. The site was not acceptable.
Mayor, I appreciate that very much, because we actually are looking at additional sites in Evendale. And that would be wonderful, to have an opportunity at a different spot and maybe...
They were under a time frame. First of September, they put the shovel in the ground. We're trying to let them know that this site is not going to be available as quickly as possible so we can go look for other sites.
Well, and again, it's not they, it's us, it's me, I'm a part, I'm on that board. So...
If I may add a little bit, I'm on the CIC. I was part of that vote. And a significant part of the discussion was the utilization of that property. And it was overwhelming that it was not our anticipated use, it was not our planned use, nor our desired use to put a school. This is not a condemnation of what you're doing, the programming. I think it's to be commended. I think there is value in everything you're saying. But it is a clear statement from the CIC and their recommendation to all of council that we not sell the property because, again, it is not the intended use or the desired use to put a school regardless of the curriculum, put a school on that property at this time. And that's, that was the conclusion unanimously of the CIC and their recommendation to all of council. Mr. Schaefer raised one vision, I think we all have visions, but you're asking us to make a decision and conclude that this is the best option for an optimal piece of property,[1448.03]